Meeting called over. We have roll call.
Dr. Robinson, here. Mr. West.
Here.
Dr. Bunce, here. Ms. Ware, she's on Zoom. And Mr. Knight.
Here. All accounted for? Okay, can we have a adoption of the agenda? Anything you think things are picking out at this time? Not to the adoption.
Uh, Mrs. James, members of the board, we move, uh, eight point one to consent, please. This, uh, five point one, you need to move.
She give up?
This five point one, you need to move, please. Yes, please. I'm not going to have any pages.
With that addition, I move that we adopted the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Bunce, second by Dr. Robinson. There we adopt the agenda. Also, we move eight point one to consent. It would be seven point nine. All in favor? No, we give you the roll call.
Dr. Robinson. And Ms. West.
Uh.
Dr. Bunce, uh, Ms. Ware. Mr. James.
Aye. Okay, it passes by me, bro. Number four is public comments. We're going to do the public comments, uh, in the boardroom. Right now, we're going to go skip to hour number five. Presentations. First presentation with Mr. Fields.
Thank you, Mr. James. Members of the board, it is my pleasure to again, uh, bring our Natchez Middle School Bulldog Football Team, uh, before you. They are the 2022-2023 Southwestern Mississippi Junior High, uh, Athletic Conference Champions. So let's give them a hand. I think they're going to ring now and mic Jordan. So we are very proud of the work that they are doing. And I want to present at this time, uh, your coach, Coach Decore Carter. Coach Carter will present the, uh, recognitions to his team. And then after that, we'll have a presentation to Coach Carter and his team.
Uh, how y'all doing today? Uh, well, a few of them didn't make it. A lot of them did make it. They said, well, Coach, I ain't gonna make it home. About four o'clock on the bus. I said, well, when you get done, you can get here. If you don't make it, then I'll give it to you tomorrow. Uh, but I would like to say I'm extremely proud of these guys. Uh, coming into the season, I replaced nineteen starters. Eleven went to the high school. I replaced nineteen. And coming to first year being a head coach, uh, been around the program five years. I was like, oh, Lord. I had no idea how this is going to go. Uh, but once I got in, the kids, they bought into what we were doing. They believed in me. Uh, and they, as time went on, it just helped. They believe helped me. So they helped me grow just as much as I helped them grow. Uh, I'm totally proud of them. Uh, I want to see a lot of them go on, move on to high school and help the high school do the same thing we're doing in middle school. Because that's, that's the goal. A goal is to not only do it at the middle school, but take it, transfer it to the high school. And maybe we can start winning some state championships there. So, uh, as of now, I have two guys in the back, two of my starters, uh, Marion Moore and Christian Jones. Uh, Tyler Stewart just walked in.
Gentlemen, stay right there. We call on behalf of Mr. James, members of the board, Superintendent Fred G. Butcher, Deputy Superintendent Miss Amberie Don Green. Want to present you all with this plaque as his award of excellence presented to the Natchez Middle School Football Team in recognition of your exemplary performance, uh, in winning the 2022 District Championship. Uh, coaches Chikor Carter, Tyrone Baller, Jeremiah Dent, and all of the players' names on this plaque. And this will be housed in Natchez Middle School.
If you must put your hand on that man, man, he didn't work.
Want to get the picture?
Yeah, one person get on the stand.
Lights, please, brother.
Reset.
Yep.
I'll come over and do the reset for five minutes.
And, uh, everybody in the boardroom.
Right, to the boardroom.
Second.
The move concerning that we go to a reset, you roll call.
Dr. Robinson. Mr. West. Dr. Bunce, uh, Ms. Ware.
Aye. It passes by me, bro. Reset meeting called over. All right. All ready? We have a public comment. By Miss Amber.
Yes, sir. Is it my time to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, wonderful. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Ms. Ambo. I'm one of the healthcare professionals from U.S. Star Nursing Clinic. We also have a new clinic, CG and Co., where we focus on the physical and wellbeing, mental wellbeing of all our students, peers, and our clients as well. We're here to offer, hopefully, a collaboration as a resource member and leader for services that the students hopefully are find that may need. We deal with students in crisis. I have spoken with some of the staff, um, in the school system as well as out, as well as the family members. And I know the community has been touched by so many heartbroken memories. Um, students having to deal with peer pressure, bullying. Uh, in addition to that, they may have, uh, physical, mental, as well as, uh, health conditions that may involve just not a prescriptions, as we say, but may entail counseling. In addition to that, other supportive resources. So with that's what we are here for, to introduce you to our neighborhood clinic. We're open twenty-four seven, which is wonderful. So after hours clinic, meaning that, uh, I think there are other clinics in the area until nine o'clock. And I do respect them as well, but we go past that. So we cover them from midnight on till the next morning. We prefer appointments. Uh, we do have clients that we work with as Forest Growth and Development from age three and up, as well as infants with developmental delays. So I have a variety of clients that have been very successful and have wonderful stories to tell at the end of their goals as well. So we're here to network with not just the student, the peers, but the parents as well. Uh, the parents are very instrumental in the coordination of our care. And we believe in mapping them to a healthy you. So that is what the student, we take them from where they are and we help them reach the goals and let them aim at what they want. We have a tendency to introduce what we want onto others, but maybe that's not always the necessary case. So each of our plans are coordinated based on the care of the individual. So everything is customized. So I hope you would consider us as a resource for amongst your students, as well as your staff. And our services and doors are open for you. And we'd like to welcome you to our neighborhood clinic. I'm located on forty-eight East Bookworm Avenue. And of course, my number is six zero one three zero four two zero four three. And I am Ms. Ambo. I appreciate your time and your consideration and hopefully we can network together. Y'all have a wonderful day.
And can you leave that information?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I sure will. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. You give it to the secretary.
Okay, to the secretary. All right, thank you.
Location. How to get in contact. Okay? And we have five points. Each presentation, making sure it's sweet. Five point two.
Mr. James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDonald-Green. The National Career Academy Coalition formed in nineteen ninety-six was created to provide collaborative support and resource for existing and emerging career academies throughout the nation, including districts in Mississippi. The coalition's belief is to make sure the success of the academy students is due to the network support that they receive from teachers, mentors, business people that they help set long-term goals to stay on a clear path for graduation. Natchez High School, working with the Mississippi Department of Education's Office of Innovative Programs and the National Career Academy, has begun exploring the career academy structure at Natchez High School. This structure started with a conversation last spring. The coalition came down and spoke to many of the staff members of the district to talk about the academy structure. This past fall, uh, members of the district team and Natchez High School's team, uh, went to Oxford to attend a planning session. And in December, a team of teachers attended workshops with other schools on project-based learning. Uh, later this month, the coalition's team will be on site here in the district for another planning session to help us determine our next steps. And so today, Jay Steele, the president of the National Career Academy Coalition, working with the Mississippi Department of Education, will provide the board an overview and what academy structures look like in the Natchez Middle School district. Mr. Steele.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jackson. Uh, I just want to make sure you can hear me. Yes?
Yes.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, good evening, board, or good afternoon, board and superintendent. Uh, it's my honor to be here with you today. Uh, my name is Dr. Jay Steele. As, uh, Mr. Jackson said, I'm the president of the National Career Academy Coalition. I have my colleague, Ms. Connie Mica, with me, who is the, uh, director of leadership programs. Connie's based in Philadelphia and I'm based in Jacksonville, Florida. And, um, we will be talking to you today about the National Career Academy Coalition and our work with the Mississippi Department of Education. As, uh, Principal Jackson said, Ms. Mica is the coach assigned to your school district. And she will be working closely on the ground with Mr. Jackson as he, um, leads the school, um, through this transformation over the next few years. And, um, the National Career Academy Coalition will bring, be bringing a lot of resources and professional development for teachers in, uh, your community. So I'm going to share my screen. Hopefully, this will work smoothly. And, um, you should see a PowerPoint that's entitled Career Connected Education in Mississippi. So the Mississippi Department of Education, um, is partnering, contracting with the National Career Academy Coalition. Um, it's a network of twenty-eight school districts across the state. It's two years of support, um, and then hopefully it will continue after that. But it provides Natchez School District with an on-the-ground coach, free professional development for your teacher, uh, project-based learning, but there's going to be a lot, lot more. Um, attendance to the national conference, uh, this year was in Atlanta. Next November will be in Tucson, where the leaders can, our teachers can, um, interact with teachers from other school districts across the country and actually visit academy schools in the Tucson area. And then the following year after that will be Chicago. Um, you also have potential membership into the Career Academy Leaders Collaborative, which is a network of national leaders that are doing this work, um, in their schools, where they come together at three meetings across the country. Mississippi will have its own collaborative that will be across the state, uh, where we share best practices and successes and barriers, um, that, uh, the school districts are experiencing. There are also school visits, um, where you can actually send groups on the ground to see what it looks like, that where they can see, touch, feel it, ask questions, speak to people who do their same jobs. You will see free curriculum and materials. And then there's also, uh, a marketing firm that will be working with the, in the Mississippi Department of Education on communication strategies, on how to communicate this throughout your constituents and your networks of parents, students, teachers, and community partners. The National Career Academy Coalition is a national nonprofit. Um, it, we support schools and districts in the college and career academy model. And we do follow ten national standards. So Principal Jackson can share those standards with you at some point, but I did put the link here. Um, nceeac.com and you can read about those ten national standards. But the beauty about these standards is they were created by a group of teachers, um, and business partners working together on the inception of this model in nineteen sixty. And through their work, these national standards came, uh, to fruition. And they're, they're building blocks for what a quality career academy should be. All right, so some of you might ask, why college and career academies? And so this is the oldest model for school reform that's out there that's showing the best success. Uh, since nineteen sixty-nine, as I said, it was created with Philadelphia with a group of teachers in the Philadelphia Electric Company working together to create something different for kids, a different experience. So right now, there are so many states and cities that are going through this transformation. There's, uh, Hawaii Academies, twenty-five high schools in Hawaii working together. And Mississippi is mirroring that, mirroring that work that's going on. Um, I'm the former chief academic of Nashville Public Schools, where we created the academies of Nashville, which really generated a lot of national attention. But this is the why. This is our challenge. Um, projected employment over the next ten years is expected to go from a hundred fifty-three point five million to one hundred and sixty-five. That's a net gain of almost twelve million jobs. Healthcare and social assistance are projected to add the most at three point three million. And with all the technological advancements, strong employment growth in professional, business, scientific services, we have to start offering those opportunities for our kids to go deeper at a much earlier age. And what we find is that the high school deployment is not good enough anymore to get kids, um, so they can be competitive to get those jobs and be competitive members of the workforce. So it's, the challenge is how do we build a system that's going to connect kids to both college and career? So, um, this is another reason why a lot of schools are changing their approach. One point two million students drop out of high school in the U.S. alone. That's, um, a student every twenty-six seconds, seven thousand a day. That's an alarming number. And about twenty-five percent of high school freshmen fail to graduate from high school on time. Okay? And the U.S. ranks twenty-first out of twenty-five developed countries in our graduation rate. So we've got to do something differently. Even other countries such as Thailand and Vietnam are starting to implement this model and see the benefits of a career-connected education for their children. So what is a college and career academy? And Principal Jackson can share more details with you. But it's a small, safe, supportive learning environment. It's contained within the larger high school setting. It has a career and college theme, preparing kids for both post-secondary and career. And when I use that word college, it's anything after high school, whether it's a technical certificate, an A.S. degree, A.A., bachelor's, an apprenticeship, something that's going to continue their training after high school, connected to that career. There's three major components. It is a smaller learning community comprised of students that take classes together for at least two to four years and taught by a team of teachers from different disciplines. I want you to think of a university analogy here. So you've got, if you, University of Mississippi has colleges of education, a college of business, a college of engineering. And they have their own faculties within those colleges, their own leaders, their own counselors. Kids choose a major and they stay within that college, but they do go outside of the college to take humanities and other courses. It's the same approach. It's taking the, that model and putting it in a high school where kids are co-ordered together around something that they're passionate about. Teachers are co-ordered together, English, math, science, social studies, and maybe a healthcare teacher. Um, and they have their counselor and they have an assistant principal. It's that team of wraparound support that stays with them for three to four years. It is a college preparatory curriculum. We want to raise the bar here, but it's with a career theme. So this would be four years of math, four years of English, four years of science and social studies, and then a major, a high school major that the kids choose. And they can change their major, just like you would in college. But it also brings partnerships with employers, like the community person who just spoke, reaching out to those community agencies, the businesses, um, nonprofits in the community to form an advisory board for the school around these pathways, including your local colleges and universities. They bring resources from outside the high school and they provide experiential learning for your kids, such as internships, job shadowing, mock interviews. So it really brings a lot of rich resources. This is what the research shows, the benefits of the model. Collaboration, not just by department, but by an interdisciplinary team, English, math, science, social studies, and whatever the pathways that the school district chooses. Community partners working together with teachers, sometimes co-teaching, but experiences for the kids. The teachers have in the master schedule common planning where they come together as a team and they focus on support and interventions for kids, social and emotional learning, and those interdisciplinary project or problem-based learning. And that's where it says interdisciplinary project. So real authentic projects for kids to work on and teachers create those. They, uh, also social and emotional learning for kids, because we know, especially in this day and age and, um, coming off of COVID, our kids need those so, social and emotional supports. So this would be a, a team wrapped around those kids that will be monitoring their attendance, their discipline, their, the social wellbeing. It also connects college and career. And these careers, the last bullet there, are high-skill, high-wage, and high-demand. These are based on Mississippi workforce projections aligned with college degrees or technical certificates and/or apprenticeships. Okay, it brings those student supports to the table. Uh, again, this would be intentional acts of guidance. And I'm not talking school counselors here, but I'm talking about a wraparound support for kids. You know, if a kid is having, uh, attendance issues, you have a team of people who are monitoring that and providing interventions and reaching out to that family and those kids for support. That creates a family-type atmosphere. We want this to be the kids, we want them to feel like it's their home. They belong somewhere and they're part of a team of caring people. Um, and whatever your school district calls it, a multi-tiered support system for kids or a response to intervention, but it's both academic and behavior. It's a system of support where we're monitoring kids and really reacting to the data before the kids get too far down a pathway that they can't turn back. It's authentic learning, real-world learning right there in your community. Um, and it aligns opportunities for kids for both high school, college, and career. Because we want kids to be able to go to school in their community, have careers in their community, and live a good quality of life and not have to leave and go somewhere else. So aligning with the, the opportunities in your community. Here's what the research shows about the model. It does have, it does increase graduation rates. It does increase daily attendance rate. It does increase student achievement when you focus on authentic learning, project-based or active learning, whatever terms work for your teachers. Students invested in their community, kids knowing who the partners are in the community and what resources are available and what are the opportunities for me as I navigate into my career and into college. Discipline incidents do decrease. Um, ACT scores rise if we do a focus on ACT. And then it also, the model also shows teachers lack being part of a team, uh, an, an interdisciplinary team where they're doing something that's bigger than myself. So it does, um, improve teacher efficacy. Here's what we're, we're asking each of the twenty-eight school districts in Mississippi to do. We're asking them to assemble a team, a school leadership of teachers, community, and business partners to start looking at the model and making a place space for your community. It should reflect the opportunities in Natchez. Starting with the ten national standards of practice, these become your building blocks. Conducting an audit of your school crosswalk with the high-still, high-wage occupations for your region and state. Are the pathways that we're currently offering, are they leading to opportunities for our kids? Then we ask the school to develop a graduate profile. So after four years of this model, when a kid walks across the stage at graduation, what will they be? What will they possess? So we're going to take a look at, at an example of that. And then building a college and career continuum of experiences. What are the experiences we want kids to have that are going to prepare them to make good choices for after they leave high school? And then develop an action plan in a smart format, a project management plan. Because transformation in a school is not easy, so it has to be chunked and it has to spread out over two to three years in order for that change to be meaningful and for people to be able to do the change. It's like building the plane as we fly it. And then implement and then monitor and review. So there are three buckets we look at. Transforming the school design. Your Natchez High School is a school that could support more than one academy. And we're going to look at a model, but students are in cohort groups that they choose. They belong, they make the choice. They stay together for at least two years. In your case, it would be four years. Teams of teachers from different disciplines. They have a lead teacher. One teacher is empowered to be the teacher leader for the, the team. And they meet with the administration, they lead team meetings, and they, um, they're paid a stipend, or like a department head. But there is a teacher that is empowered to be the leader of those teachers. Student choice. It's voluntary enrollment in the academy and pathway of their choice. There are no barriers to get in. There are no math scores to get into engineering or science scores to get into healthcare. We want kids to follow their passion. Opportunity for students to engage in a full range of school activities. They can still be in the choir, the band, the ROTC, whatever clubs there are, sports. Okay, kids still take the same classes they would take in high school with the addition of one major packed course a year, like healthcare. Okay, the teaching and learning in that model. Um, academic courses meet and exceed graduation and college entrance requirements. And common planning time for teachers and project-based learning. Those are all key. And college and career planning. And then working with your partners. This is extremely important. We can't do this alone. We have to have those business and post-secondary partners. And our kids need to get industry-valued certifications and college credit before they graduate from high school. All right, so this is the Natchez High School graduate profile. This is a draft that we created with the state. But we want kids to be post-secondary ready, career-ready, technology-ready, challenge-ready, and community-ready. And what you see on the right are measures that your district could choose to implement. But this should be customized for your district. This is just a sample from the state. Okay, here is the college and career continuum that the state, we've created with the state. And we're asking districts, so pick and choose from here. What are the opportunities here you want your kids to have? And this is one hundred percent of your kids would give this. Things like developing a tenure plan, attending a college and career fair, developing an electronic portfolio, earning a certification, writing their personal statements. Those, and you can see the recommended grade levels there. So this would be something that the high school team would need to sit down and map out every kid getting in every single year. All right, and this is a sample draft of what Natchez could look like. In talking with Principal Jackson, he, um, says that the, the high school is wanting three academies. And inside each of those academies, they would take English, math, science, and social studies for four years, two electives, and then you can see a possible pathway under each one. So again, this is just draft. But let's say it's an academy implied sciences, maybe healthcare can be a pathway, child development, teaching, automotive, construction, diesel, biotechnology. Those are offered off-campus at your technical center, but your team of gen ed teachers would be back at the main campus. You have your academy of the arts, which could be drama, choir, strings, fine arts, whatever that could look like. And then academy of hospitality and tourism. Um, kids would choose to take culinary, business, hotel management, entrepreneurship, or marketing. Again, this is draft. That's what it could look like. All right, so I'm going to stop there and, because I know that that was a lot of information. But it does give you, uh, an idea of what the school that will be working on over the next two to three years. All right, so I'm going to stop there. And, um, Principal Jackson, if there's anything you want to add to that, please take over.
Yeah, any questions?
Yeah, any questions?
No.
No.
Thank you, Dr. Steele.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'll see you all next week. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
I'll take care.
Is that Philadelphia, Mississippi or Pennsylvania? Pennsylvania, oh, okay.
So Eric, you did spend time in Oxford working through this program with other...
Yeah, a team of us, Ms. Mack, Ms. Morrison.
Are y'all enthusiastic about what this is? I mean, I am. I mean, I like, I like, I get this whole learning environment.
It is exciting what you've been talking about and what the board has some vision for. Just to make sure that we're working in partnership with our local elected leaders.
Yeah.
We've been talking about workforce development for our students. We have to prepare them for future. I know that one of the visions that you all have set as a board is that when students leave Natchez Adams School District, they are prepared to enter the world of work, whether that be through certifications that they receive. This will be an extension of the program at Mr. Moore's school. Allow more students those work-related experiences. But also if they want to go to college, we prepare them ahead of time with those prerequisites or understanding what that process looks like. So when our students do get to college, they're prepared to go in and be successful.
Well, and they're going to have also a better chance at choosing a major. They're going to have a lot more, they're a lot more focused for choosing a major. That's what I like about it.
Well, my question was how is this going to be integrated with what we already have? Why wouldn't they put that particular presentation in writing to us so we would be able to read it as opposed to taking the last 30 minutes to hear it?
This was all in introduction. We do have fresh material that we have.
All I'm saying is we do, it says brief presentation.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and there were some questions such as what we're asking now about this. But I'm saying we don't have, well, it's just time-consuming, okay, to now deal with asking the questions that we should have been asking 15, 20 minutes ago about this particular program. So you already been meaning about this and what have you. And you think it'll be good. And I, because I was wondering how it is this going to impact what we're presently doing, whether in a positive way, is this an enhancement or is it something? What is it, I mean?
So this is taking what we're currently doing and kicking it up a couple knots.
Okay, but what's, so what's the difference is my point?
So now a kid is in academic courses and the regular school all day long.
And so we've got NECA, okay? I'm thinking about all this, okay?
And so say for instance, I'm that ordinary kid who wants to major in engineering or want to major in the arts and be a singer. Now half of my day is focused on that rather than my whole day is focused on academics. And so that kid maybe gets to go to all four and participate in dual enrollment in their choir or drama program or whatever partner we seek out.
So this would not adversely in any way impact the requirements for graduation on a regular basis that we normally have?
No, and everything that we're doing will be sanctioned by the Department of Education. So they are walking with us along this as well.
Okay, and so, and from a financial perspective then, in fact, all of the financial resources that are necessary to do this are coming through the state and through this particular organization?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can Mr. West, to further answer your question, Mr. Moore, would we're down and introduce the career coaches that have been employed by the state? The application turned into the state. And we were only, there are only 28 districts in the whole state that's taking advantage of this. I was going to meet the other day and I asked him if it's possible then we could maybe reapply or whatever the case is for some of those districts that's not taking advantage of it. Because I would like to see a start just like in the eighth grade.
Well, you know, we've got, we already have coaches and other contracting persons and I'm just doing different things. So we keep adding layers and layers or whatever the case may be. And I'm just wondering how it all fits and that kind of thing. So, but I can appreciate.
But this brings the whole piece together.
I understand, but I'm just saying, I know we've got layers and layers of coaches here and coaches there. And now of course we're going to an academy and that's going to lead us to more directive in terms of where the students are going to be. We've got Brother Moore dealing with other kinds of, you know, well, you know. It's a whole bunch of stuff going on from an education perspective. And I'm just hoping that we're not, you know, doing some things that may be counterproductive. That's something.
Mr. Johnny, member of the board, Mr. Butcher, Miss McDonald Green. Distinct honor of introducing our new career coaches to the district. As McDonald said, these are paid by the state. We were one of 20-some districts who applied for the 28 districts who applied to have a career coach. And we were fortunate enough to get three of the best, I think. At NECA, we would have Ms. Brianna Walker. Ms. Brianna Walker. She'll be working with Ms. Heather Jackson and her students and staff. And at Natchez High School, we have Ms. Angela James. And we would have Ms. Faith Lewis.
Or you even give her the job? You left your job? You got to come up with more money?
As, as Ms. McDonald and Mr. Butcher were saying, they would work in concert with Mr. Jackson and Ms. Jackson at NECA and Natchez High School to also work more directly with students and their career choices as they proceed. A lot of times what happens is the students that we have coming through high school, some of them are lost in the shuffle. So these three individuals will be able to nurture them and walk them through ninth through 12th grade and hopefully get them on the path towards success, whether that be college, career, military, or whatever they so choose. So they will work directly with and they will report monthly to the district as to what they're doing and how they're getting it done.
So the third person?
Ms. Faith Lewis. Thank you.
Well, and one thing too, and Eric, I'll say this to you, you know, how we... It's, it's easy to say, Mr. Moore, isn't it?
Yes.
For the coaches too.
Yes.
That, to talk in these abstract terms that he talked about, you know? All of the abstract nouns that he used in his presentation, we understand. And I know, I've heard education speak for a long time, but it's what actually happens one-on-one with a student that really counts. And so I guess I'm sharing Mr. West's concern. We hear all of these sort of abstract nouns of, you know, we're going to change things and we're going to give people career, you know. But I do believe coaches are the ones working one-on-one and individual plan, academic plans. Is that right, Eric? Is that what we're looking at? In the same way a counselor goes in and does that, this will also enhance that sort of thing. That what we've been having school counselors and now y'all are going to come in and do real academic planning with, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And so what these career coaches will do, they're going to work with individual students. So they come to Xander and figure out where Xander is interested in diesel mechanics.
It's like the university, it's your advisor.
Yes.
The way your advisor should work, which often at a university, it doesn't work. And advisors at universities only work when the advisor and the student have the real relationship that makes it work. So that's what I'm saying. We can talk all we want abstractly, but it's up to individual coaches to do this, this work and make this system work. And so, I mean, I'm glad the state's enhanced, you know, wanting to do this, but it's going to be up to y'all.
But I was...
We're aware of that, just saying.
I was going to let you know, I was going to ask your opinion, your opinion on what just...
Okay, well, I gave it to you before you...
Because I consider yourself and the one and Dr. Robinson, you all of the educators on the board, and especially you, and I was going to ask you, do you see this being something real positive?
I do, but I know it's only as good, like any system, it's only as good as the people we put in. Just like, you know, it's only as good as the teacher in the classroom. It's only as good as the coaches and the effort that we put in to, to, to make it work. But of course, I think it's a good system if we do that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Five point three.
While she's lighting everything up, I'll get started. Sorry to be warm. Not lengthy self.
Pithy is the word.
Okay. Which one would you like for me to start with? So I'll start there. Want to go over Esser? Click right here. Have to do that. You have the, there's a couple of things on there if you can pop up. Okay. So on the board is what you have in front of you here. So this is the breakdown from the architect on Esser for each one of the schools. And actually, oh, there's one, there's one. This estimate right there. Very helpful. I don't drive, it's, it's a little bit. Okay, what she's putting up on the screen right here is an estimate for that Dale Bailey put together on cost of the work. Now, when they put the estimate together, it's for everything together in one. And it's got everything in there from general requirements, which is what contractor costs are, masonry and metals and woods and plastic, which is all part of restrooms, just different components of the pricing. The openings that we were looking at doing with metal doors and hardware, the finishes, and then they have specialties. And then they get into plumbing and mechanical. So at the very bottom of all of this work is basically $9,807,190, okay? So we go to this. So what this is that I gave you is a breakdown of that a little bit further per school and going down the list, okay? So it's a little further breakdown. Since we last met, I've been with him and talking to Mr. Purser over there, who's our project architect, and getting a breakdown. And he sent me this, which shows you per school what they've got. So Morgantown, if you go all the way down to the bottom, $4.3 million worth of work if you do all the things you've got there. McLaurin, 2.6...
With the big one being HVAC.
Yes, ma'am. The big one would be HVAC for all of them.
Well, why?
So one of the things that y'all, that Mr. West was pointing out last week and a couple of the others trying to did as well was, you know, when we allocated it out for each school, it was the same amount at each school. And it's obvious one school is bigger than the other and it's going to require a little bit more. So you can see, it's obvious that Morgantown is a little bit bigger, so it requires a little more money than McLaurin and West. So I can tell you that all of that together in the totals of $9.4 million fits within your construction amount of $10 million and some change. Okay, he's also got contingencies built in for design. So as they get into design and it kind of goes in and make a little bit of creep of some costs and stuff in there, he's making allowances for that. I also am carrying owner contingencies for you overall in the budget as I showed you all last, last time. So I hope this helps to break it down a little bit more.
You just made a statement that within our budget of $10 million. Where is that number from?
Can you go to the one? I'm not sure, everybody on the TV is getting the best view of me right now. Okay, so this is something here, Mr. Butcher put the, last, last time I gave you budgets for... Okay, last time I gave you a budget for each individual school. So McLaurin, how much was HVAC, how much is windows, how much is restrooms and stuff? These were budget numbers, okay? So there's my, for HVAC, the $3,395, that's the same on all three schools, okay? So, but if you take that, that's the budget. These numbers fit into these as well. But if you take the subtotal hard cost, $3,845,000, that's how much we have for construction in each project. And, because I cannot remember the exact number off the top of my head. If I multiply it by three, that's 11, actually it's $11,535.
You mean 11,800?
Excuse, $11,535.
Now, I was just curious, when you, when you said $10 million, I was wondering what it...
That is for construction. Then you have all the other costs in there for design services, technology, you know, any of those other things, contingency, RFE and stuff that I factored into the overall budget to get you to your overall Esser amount. So what I'm saying, you have $11.5 billion. That's what I had budgeted for construction and right now they're showing 9.4. Okay. Now, this is an architect's estimate in conjunction with him working with his electric, with the mechanical engineer. So he goes out on the street, you get the true, what the contract, what it's going for on the street right now. And some of this mechanical stuff is just kind of all over the board. Sometimes you've been in and your great number is sometimes a little high. So he's got contingencies built in and I've got some as well to try to protect them. But we are, we're about $2 million below what we showed in there for construction.
That was $13 million. That the number we referred to probably, I do want, I remember seeing that number.
Uh, can you scroll down to the bottom of subtotal for McLaurin? Is that four? $13,125,543 is your overall number.
Right, okay.
I need you better than my calculator, if you listen. That's your overall number. $11.5 of that is for construction. And his breakdown of the construction cost based on his design itself is 9.4.
And that's for all three schools?
Yes, sir. Broken down as you see it right there.
That does include, does it include the architectural fees and that kind of thing?
No, sir, I had that budgeted elsewhere.
Okay, okay.
So I hope that kind of gives you some further information based on what you wanted last, last month. Now, I have, they are ready to go ahead and put this thing out on the street based on an overall composite total. I mean, I had, I had a big advertisement prepared. We have big documents, everything ready to go if you want to proceed with doing the entire package. So we can get this thing going because we're going to, we're starting to get into timelines. We need to start, need to get moving on.
Well, Mr. Jane, the president has suggested that we sit down and go over where we got this information and then the additional information that we, that's not only listed on here before we kind of make proceedings. That's still your position, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we'll get back to agreement with it.
Okay. So, and we can always have, I guess we could have a special call meeting to discuss. I don't know, I don't think we're going to get a chance to discuss and do it today. Well...
If y'all want to do one next week, I'm happy to try to, I could come by and try to go through that. I can even bring the architect by him as well if you have particular questions for him and he may be able to answer.
Well, I think what we wanted to do is look at the overall picture. What's being proposed, how much, and us of funds we'll be expending if we do this, this, or that. And then see how much we'll have left to do other kinds of things or whatever. And the only way to do that is look at everything as opposed to just segment it in a certain way.
Right.
And what you're referring to is other things that are non-capital projects, non-construction type projects.
Correct, correct. And it may, and we may even go to other capital projects, but at least we'll know where we are, we'll have a good reason to do that further down the road as opposed to, you know, not really going in the blind and jumping, how much money we're going to have and that kind of thing.
Okay.
You know? I think that was my, it's my thought, you know? That we need to make sure that we have a rainy day fund.
Yes, sir.
Because y'all know your period of that.
Yes, sir. Continency in my, in my world.
I know it's a contingency.
I make sure we protect ourselves with those things.
Right.
Well, if you let the superintendent know, Mr. Butcher, can let me know if y'all got something. I'm happy to come and sit down and go through if you want to or if that, what you got there is sufficient or completely get it. My only thing is... My only thing is, we, you know, like I said, we're ready to go out for bid, within, you know, I, I tell Bailey, and within a week or two, we're ready to put that thing out on the street, and we probably need to, particularly because the mechanical units are taking some time to get in. We want to go ahead and get on that, on that curve with them. And I want to be honest with you, some doors and hardware and stuff are, are kind of out there too. Everything's just kind of crazy, and I'd rather just get it out, let's, let's see what the schedule's gonna be once we get a contract.
Mr. James, you think we can have a meeting next week, Sunday? What, what, what? What y'all think?
I'm good until Wednesday.
You good until Wednesday?
Yeah, yeah. We're not going together.
We're not together, but it's not together.
Wait a minute, now. Okay, where they, y'all, y'all going?
Thursday.
So then on the lead, what, Monday, Tuesday? What, what about your doc? What about your doc?
Uh, any day, yeah.
Tuesday?
I thought I signed it off.
Okay. That good?
What, what that Tuesday, the what? Tuesday's saying will be the twenty-fourth.
Okay. Mr. Superintendent, we, we'll be again on, have a special call meeting on Tuesday, to sit down and. Are you, are you, is that okay with, that good?
Do we have a time?
All right, that's what I was trying to get to.
What's good for you?
Uh, probably anytime after one.
After one? What about you, Doc?
I don't feel comfortable talking because I don't have a mic.
I have your mic.
Somebody too.
You all be there on one. You carry one with you?
No, I don't want your mic.
No, you can have it.
Okay, thank you.
Who took your mic from you? When it wasn't me?
I'm just joking, Tuesday, after one is good.
Where's all that good night? You don't know what happened tonight?
Yeah, I know.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna eat, no, as long as he know.
Okay, well, Tuesday.
She said after one, right?
Yeah.
What about two?
Tuesday and two.
What about that, Doc?
Fun.
All right. Got my count. Okay. Uh, so that's the overall, the, the Esser for Morgantown, McLaurin and West. As far as the Esser goes with the middle school project, we have, in talking to Mr. Byrd, I think they have received today three point eight, something like this and change. And they've got a couple more things that they have turned in, it's one of those kind of one year to the next allocation of budgets and stuff, but he's, he's looking at getting four points three, and I told him up to four point six here with the next payment coming in. So, um, that's where we stand, that is above what we had originally anticipated, so every extra dollar helps the middle school. Uh, the middle school budget wise is still in good shape, it's just, that just keeps furthering, further helping us out, that we're getting some of those funds reimbursed. So, that's, uh, and I mean, everything has been submitted up through November, because I got theirs in December, which is everything up through November thirtieth. So all of that has been submitted into Ms. Thomas so far today. So. Uh, any questions on Esser, middle school and/or overall?
No.
Is there anything, did y'all want any other updates or anything?
I'll give it.
Thank y'all very much, and I'll see, I'll see y'all next week.
Five point four. Yeah, I'll go get them, I'll bring them in. All right, these are the proposals, integrity will be discussed. All right. So where's yours? Okay?
I'm waiting on a coworker, Ryan Burridge, one second, I apologize while I connect to the Zoom.
Ryan, you're gonna just hit the half points, we are in Vegas presentation, a couple of times already, right?
Uh, yes, sir, all, all I'm gonna do is just kind of quickly hit half points and then cover the numbers, and then hand it up the questions. So this should, please connect to. I can't get this working, about thirty seconds, then we'll just skip the presentation.
I thought we were more interested in the numbers anyway?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the money, the amount of land it needs, those kind of things, but you know, you've given us the breakdown, so most everything else already.
Yes, sir. Uh, so we've handed out the proposals. So we can just go through that, before we go to the presentation. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank y'all so much for having me, I'm Ryan Burridge, got a chance to speak to y'all several months back, appreciate y'all having us here. Uh, this is Jacob Tracy, uh, we've been working together, um, with y'all's administration, uh, trying to figure out how we practically implement the solar for schools program, um, for actually out of the school district. Um, so at this point, we have identified the site, um, that site is located behind your new school building, um, and, and that is gonna take up approximately sixteen acres of land, uh, on, on that land. I'm sorry, Mr. Butcher, I say it wrong. Okay, um, so on that land you'll have, uh, solar panels, what we're looking at, um, is, uh, basically solar panels that will cover, uh, about two point three megawatts worth of power. Um, so that is about as much power as your facilities in totality across the district use. Um, so under this law, basically, you're able to, um, offset the power consumption of all of the schools with one solar array. Um, and, and so what that is gonna do is basically provide you with a lower cost per kilowatt hour for the energy that all the buildings are using, including this one. Um, so as far as the numbers go, uh, we can look on page seven. It's gonna look like this. Um, so that kind of shows you on the, from the graph, you know, what the annual production numbers are, which is just over four million kilowatt hours. Um, and then from the estimated revenue, uh, we're looking in total at seventy-three thousand in year one, and then that will escalate, and we'll look at, through a twenty-five year model on the next page. Um, and, and so across twenty-five years, the district is looking at about two point two five million dollars of revenue, um, from this project. Now, just to reiterate, uh, integrity covers all costs, so land rent, solar panels, the interconnection, everything, uh, maintenance, keeping the grass cut, the whole nine yards. So the district absolutely has no cost, all you see is revenue coming in the door.
If everybody in the, in the county gets a solar panel, though, and this is still going to give us those sorts of savings?
Yes, ma'am, so this is a special provision that we've been working with, um.
You, you get, you get my point, though?
Absolutely.
You know, because everyone says, you know, that they'll buy, the, the energy will buy it back until everybody gets it, then the energy doesn't start buying back the utility cost.
Yes, ma'am, well, so, uh, this is a special program through the public service missions solely for public schools. Uh, this is something that we've been working.
I remember when you said it, and I, yeah, and so this, yeah, this is to start us off, I mean, this is to start the state off.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely, and so.
Is, is this particular product proposal limited to this particular site that you mentioned? Uh, would other, uh, school district property in other locations, uh, qualified for this particular proposal?
Say, yes, sir, Mr. West, we have worked with your sixteen section land manager, um, so we'll get all sites, uh, under the district's umbrella. Um, and, you know, unfortunately, there's a few things that don't mix well with solar panels. Number one's floodland, um, so, you know, it's gonna get flooded, we can't put the solar panels out there. Uh, number two is hills, and, and so it's kind of hilly, um, can't put it out there because, you know, they create shade on the next panel. Um, and so as we're looking, this land really is working out to be the best.
I understand that, but I'm, I'm just saying, it's just the only spot that you'd be with being qualified.
I believe.
That we own.
Yes, sir, I believe so, I believe we kind of turned over all the stones, and we, we kept kind of laying it back on this one. Um, i- if this site is not suitable, what we would then do is go look for private land, um, and we would either purchase it or lease it, um, split the project. Now, you know, one thing that would do is if you turn to page eight, um, you, uh, so let's get that out of the way. Um, if you turn to page eight, you'll look at the second, uh, the second column says annual lease revenue, the sixteen thousand dollars. Um, so, uh, you know, I think I might have described this, uh, the last time I was here, as, as a math equation, right? You've got the amount of money that the, the utilities require to pay for the kilowatt hours that are coming in the door. You know, all the variables that go into making those kilowatt hours on the other side. Um, so those variables include, uh, the civil costs, the interconnection costs, the solar panels, and what the land costs. And so what we really wanted to do is be able to provide that land cost back to the district. Um, and so if we lease the land from the district, that's just money going to y'all beyond what the utility costs are. Uh, but if you have to give it land elsewhere, then that sixteen thousand would then go to all of the lands. Um, so, you know, that is a benefit, um, so from the energy savings standpoint, if year one, the district would be looking at just under fifty-eight thousand on the utility savings, and then in addition to that, you'd be looking at an additional sixteen thousand in lease revenue, uh, for the sixteen acres. And so each year, as you can see here, the twenty-five years is projected out, those both tick up just a little bit, based on historical averages. Um, and, uh, in totality, that is right at two point two five billion dollars.
How much land do we have?
About what you say, yeah.
Yes, ma'am, you're looking at, I believe it's over fifty acres behind the new high school, uh, we're looking at it with, uh, Mr. Heiser, Mr. Byrd, and Mr. Butcher.
Is that right?
I believe it's over fifty, uh, when you go all the way to the interstate.
That we own?
Uh, that you own behind the high school, is what we're looking at.
But then you have to remember, part of that land is the next street.
Yes, sir, so what we would do, um, moving forward is, we're not gonna, you know, start building tomorrow. We'll stake it out, make sure it works with y'all's school district, uh, to determine the spot, and again, if it's not a spot that works for y'all, go and look at private land. But, um, that piece of land, that was the best, um, you know, place that we could find, thousand dollars an acre. Um, and, you know, since it's right by the school, you know, there's additional education component, component that, uh, you know, might come with that.
It's just that we had plans for that for tennis courts and playing fields and that's high, and expanding that, so that would be. So how much do we have left, is what I'm trying to figure out.
And, and we'll, um, we'll run those numbers to make sure we know. Um, this is just page nine, if you can see there. That's just a, an idea of what that looks like. Um, obviously, we can move it over, around, you know, we don't want to get in y'all's building plans. Um, the solar array is gonna be there for, you know, at least the next twenty-five years. Um, so, you know, when we're looking, you know, you will see north, um, of the building, there's plenty of space there. Um, that's also an opportunity, we can move it, this is just the first option that we, uh, wanted to put in front of y'all.
And so our, our calculation on like fifty-eight acres is based on what the land roll says, sometimes that's inaccurate, so that might, that might not be the full breadth.
Does the configuration have to be that configuration for the solar panels, no, or they could be put other places and?
Yes, ma'am, so the reason we went with that spot just originally.
Better fun, huh?
Um, so, well, it has to be, so our roads are minimum four hundred and twenty feet long, um, and, and so they do run north to south. Um, but, uh, the reason we went with that spot was because it's already cleared, uh, you know, as we talk about the variables, the civil, the civil construction costs, so clear the land, if we did go north, uh, then we would have to clear that land, and there would be some additional costs, so then, you know, pull out y'all's savings, but we can absolutely adjust where this location is. Uh, I, I do think that it is in the district's best interest to try to put on your land, if, if feasible, just because that, that lease revenue portion of, of the twenty-five year deal.
How do you attribute that to nothing?
Um, so, we, uh, we have looked across the state in a bunch of different, uh, school district lands. Um, you know, by and large, we've, we've really not seen many sixteen sections besides like commercial leases that are above about five hundred. Um, so, you know, we just want to make sure that the district is compensated, you know, beyond fair, uh, of, of what that, that lease rate is. So, um, you know, some districts have said, hey, we, we'd like to shift a little bit less into our lease rate, and a little bit more into our energy savings. And some districts have said we'd like to have, you know, something like a thousand dollars an acre in our land lease and get the rest of our energy savings. So, you know, for us, it, it's kind of six and one half dozen of it on there.
Can we put it on roofs?
Well, roofs kind of bring a lot of complications, and I, I think Mr. Gonzalez, if he was still here, would probably agree with that.
Al Mako would love to hear that.
Um, you know, we, we don't like putting things on roofs, because you got all these penetrations, and, um, so, ground mount just tends to be a lot more cost effective to implement. Not saying we don't want roofs, but we like grounds.
Like, yeah, more convenient.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely, from a maintenance perspective of, of all that, and then, you know, uh, some districts, if they don't have a brand new roof on, on the building, let's say we put something on a roof, then ten years later, you gotta put a new roof on, well, there's an added cost of pulling those solar panels down and all that.
Is that why solar panels are so difficult to retrofit into older homes?
Yes, sir, and typically people don't like, you know, drilling new holes in your roofs, because then that's just more, more opportunity for leaks, and then all of a sudden, the contractors paying for the water coming in your house, so we, we like, we like to stay on the ground if possible for a lot of reasons. But yeah, I mean, I, I think, uh, this is, you know, definitely an exciting opportunity for the district, uh, you know, to definitely monetize something that currently is just an expense. Every month, you're sending money to the power company, you know, if you like being in my house, I kind of feel helpless about it, not a whole lot I can do. Uh, but this, this program does give y'all an opportunity to basically, number one, save money out of the gate, and number two, um, you know, uh, prevent the district from seeing inflation hit this operational budget down the road. Uh, this truly is a hedge against inflation, because, you know, we, we project the utility costs are gonna go up in the Mississippi. We have some of the lower costs to the United States, and, you know, I think just law of averages, we're gonna catch up at some point. So this is locking the district here for twenty-five years at a, you know, low cost per kilowatt hour. All right, thank y'all so much for your time.
Thank y'all.
Could we do this, uh, board room for data presentation? We will give you this information tonight, since we're gonna have a special meeting, you have an opportunity to vote, you can vote your turn to the back, where they can ask any question they might have at that time, you might ask any question after that time.
Yeah, boy, good job.
Y'all already, y'all already. They already, y'all gonna bring it back.
Y'all wanna come back, because y'all already.
Well, I mean, it's on there. Uh, yeah, yeah.
I prefer to do it while we're here. Yeah, but time's like, we, uh, yeah.
When y'all say time? Okay, all right, we're up.
They gonna take long?
No, 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 no.
We want to hear about.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, of members of the board, Mr. Butcher, McDonald, Green. I'm Angela Reynolds for Morgantown Elementary.
Is, is your, in your, in your bag there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Where's Mr. Pepperlance and their markups?
They have our copies.
They, they, they on this boardroom. Yeah, I seen them.
On the wall. The information is also listed on the wall, um, and I, you may have been to see it, but.
Look up there.
Okay, well, you should have our copies, I have this by the table.
You got it right.
And I would be as detailed and brief as possible.
You're talking on, on, on the phone.
It's on our, it's on our, it's on our phone, fine.
Okay, it's more than that, right?
Yes, more than that.
And, and let me, let me ask this question, uh, ask you to do this if you can. When you give your brief report, uh, would you then articulate what the comparison is between this year and last year?
Yes, sir.
Whether you moved up, you same, or you come down?
Yes, sir. Morgantown Elementary will actually receive, uh, its first rating this school year, but we're basing our data off of. But we're basing our data off of Fraser Elementary information from last year. So last year, Fraser received a B three ninety-one. Instead of thirty-three points higher at four twenty-four, which is still a B. Looking at our first and second nine-week benchmark assessment for term one, our ELA proficiency level was twenty-six point five percent. Term two was twenty-one percent. Our math proficiency level was twenty-five percent for term one, twenty-three percent for term two. Science, fifty percent term one, forty-one percent for term two. Our goal is thirty percent in reading, thirty-four percent in math, and science is fifty percent. And we're predicting to maintain the growth that we receive. So if we maintain that growth along with where we are now, we are a few points short of our goal, but still within maintaining the B from last year. A, a few points higher than.
So we, we a few points short of.
Of our goal, but maintaining the rating from last year. Yes. That's if we do not reach that proficiency goal, but we're, we're doing everything we can to make.
Long as we don't go down in the first.
No, we're not predicted to go down.
Okay, okay, all right.
Any other questions? Now we have Meg Lauren.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Ms. Martin, the principal of Meg Lauren Elementary. We are, received a rating of an A. Our goal is thirty-two points higher. We've had a four fifty-five A for last year. We set a goal that we put thirty-two points higher. For term one, for our benchmark assessment, term one, for ELA, we had twenty-eight percent proficiency. Term two, we went up to forty-six percent. Math, we, term one was twenty-five percent, went up to fifty-four percent. Science, thirty-six percent, and term two was fifty-five percent. Our goals were set very high. If we, our goal is fifty-seven percent in reading, we're currently at forty-six percent for to the benchmark. Our goal for math is fifty-three percent. Math for the benchmark, we're at fifty-four percent. And we're expecting to maintain the growth. We're gonna try to maintain that growth as well. Any questions?
So where we need to be in math?
Yeah.
That's excellent.
In math.
We're a bit behind on.
We're, we're behind on the ELA, and we are, we are working on that. We're taking our MOY right now to start this, so that'll kind of give us more idea of where we are.
We within the framework of the same thing that you were saying, that you.
Yes.
So what you'll have next, next month is they will have taken MOY. We'll be able to actually calculate growth. We're working also with an outside vendor who's also gonna help double check our calculations. So we'll be able to pinpoint, give you a projection of where school is graded as though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now with that.
Good evening, Mr. James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McDonald Green. I am Dr. Latonia Hammond, principal at West Elementary. We are currently, the rating is a C, three sixty-five point eight is a C. That is twelve points from a B. Our term one district benchmark, twenty-six percent in English, twenty-one percent in math, and sixty-three percent in science. Term two, we did go up to twenty-eight point five percent in English and point two five tenths, well, hundreds of a point in math. And we did go up, we increased in science for the second benchmark. We are looking to go at least to a three seventy-seven, which is a B. And as Ms. McDonald Green stated, we are taking MOY this week. But our English and for our BOY was twenty-six percent, our math was twenty-one percent, and our science was sixty-three percent. We are slated to increase in science. We had seventeen point two percent on last year. And right now, we are at sixty-three percent, and our goal is seventy percent. We do have a first-year teacher, and she has gotten in the classroom and worked with the students. So therefore, her moving the students and working with mentors from Meg Lauren and Morgantown is really helping out by her being a first-year teacher. So we really have increased in the area of science.
Okay.
Very good.
Very good.
All the kids are tested next week, right? Oh, already just?
It starts now. Starts today.
Are they all making the references in here? Need to get my energy bar for you to keep, so you stay woke. Can you buy some, you know, something? Give them something.
Good evening, Mr. James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher, Ms. McGreen. I'm Mrs. Mills, administrative principal.
Latania Dunbar, instructional principal.
And we are two of the three team members for Natchez Middle School Administration. When it comes to Natchez Middle School, as Ms. Rowan stated, Natchez Middle School is considered a new school. So this will be the first rating for this school this academic year. However, we are basing our data points off of Morgantown and Robert Lewis. When it comes to our goals, our goal for reading is thirty-five percent. Our goal for math is twenty-nine percent proficiency, and our goal for science is sixty percent. Last year, Morgantown had three forty-four point seven, which was a C, and Robert Lewis at three seventy-four point three, which is C. And our goal is a three eighty-two, which is a B. So that, that's what we're aiming for. When it comes to term one.
For term one, English, we had twenty-one percent proficient. Term two, English, we had twenty-two percent proficient. Math, term one, seventeen percent proficient. Term two, fifteen percent proficient. For science, term one, twenty-three percent proficient, and term two, twenty-eight percent proficient.
And I, I want to say that where we currently are for each one of those subject areas is higher than where Morgantown ended. But not is where we want it to be. So we are higher than Morgantown, but working towards where Robert Lewis was. I will say this, we completed ELA MOY today, and we're looking at twenty-eight percent proficiency in ELA. So that's the one we do know we have, and that is an increase from BOY, which was twenty-one percent. So that puts us roughly seven points from our goal in ELA, and that's very doable. Because we've met with the teachers, we've done item analysis, we, we're trying to address those misconceptions our students have when it comes to those different standards. So we're in a good place.
Y'all feel pretty good.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Let me ask one question, I guess, and this is probably for all principals. What are we doing about these chronic absentees?
Well, we have a, a good thing in place, but it's just, you know, as far as addressing when it happens, I guess being reactive. Between our tenants, clerk, and our counselors, they're doing a very good job of contacting parents, having to bring those excuses in. And even having one-on-one meetings with the students, especially in secondary, because they understand anything on the school. But it's just, it's reactive, just kind of being proactive. I mean, and I will say this, if you look at that decrease we had from October to November in our student ADA, around that time, just when we had that traffic. We had RSV with younger siblings, we had COVID, and we had the flu. So just trying to, a lot of that is taking place. And like, right now, we got a stomach bug going around in the school. So it's just trying to overcome these different things.
So are we still using the zone system? Or some students?
No, ma'am. So the majority of our students, the chronic absences they are on, that's another level. Those, those are some supports they need at the home level. We have students who are missing more than twelve days. Now, students who are missing two or three days out of school, we work with the families to make certain that they get, get their makeup work. To make sure that they need assistance. We do have after-school tutorials on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so that works for them. But we have those who are chronically absent. That's what we have to send our social workers, and we have to send out our regional attendants, obviously, because they're, they're just some other factors that are there that are beyond that.
So that's consensus of all schools we share here.
But I will say, as compared to the last two years, if you look at the chronic numbers for ten and higher, it's significantly lower than it has in the last two years. We're looking at roughly six percent of our students that are ten or more absentee, so that's a lot lower than it's been been.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Eric Jackson, the administrative principal of Natchez High School.
Y'all do y'all too good.
Yeah.
Good day, some comfortable Natchez Middle College.
Larry will trust the next person.
Yeah, like graduation.
And so, again, with, with the Mississippi Department of Education, there are so many anomalies that goes on with us. There's gonna be some lagging data here. And so English and algebra has already been defined. And so those numbers that we earned last year, I'm sorry, algebra one and following along, those numbers are already defined. So those numbers stays the same. So the numbers that we're working on this year for those two subject areas will be reflective of twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And so, and that's just based on their accounting model to keep everybody on the same one-thousand-point scale. Chronic absentees, we are down tremendously from where we've been. However, I have been meeting with parents, particularly the senior parents, about getting to school and things of that nature. Just met one Friday, student was there Friday, come today, she's not there. And it is just hard because of, you know, many of them are parents themselves. They've had a child, been finding babysitter, and things of that nature. So Ms. Robert McGreen is working with us, working with the families to provide support to make certain that we take care of those kids. And English, term one, we had seventeen percent passage proficiency in advance. We dropped to fourteen percent in term two. U.S. history, we were at twenty-nine percent proficiency, and we increased in term two to thirty-six percent proficiency. And so compared to last year in U.S. history, we are ten students fewer than we had at this time. But we've identified roughly seventy-two students who are just at the passing mark, not showing proficiency, so that we can move. And so we're move, identifying those that we can move from just passing to proficiency in both categories.
Do they make public interviews? I mean, at some point, the state, where we are within this, do they make an announcement today? In preliminary numbers, they never say. So we're following our preliminary numbers, but.
Right. This is internal, this is internal data.
This is our internal data, and then until it's reported to them, they don't, we don't really have, have the score.
And so using the assessment platform that we have in the district for the last five or six years.
It's been pretty good.
I predict this has been pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, right. I mean, I, you know, we talked about that, but, but. I prefer that it's not Mr. James.
Okay, I agree with so far. Next Middle College, term one, English one, we had forty-five percent proficient. For term two, we increased to seven percent proficient in English, with an additional twenty percent of those students right there at the three B, who are a couple of points away from level four. For math, term one, forty-five percent proficient. Term two, we increased to fifty-eight percent proficient, which is right about where we were at this time last year. The goal is seventy-four percent for both of those. For science, term one, we had fifty-one percent proficient. For term two, we increased to sixty-eight percent proficient. U.S. history, fifty-one percent proficient for term one, and we did, that's the only area that we did show a significant decrease in, to thirty-eight percent. So I have been meeting with those teachers, and we've been identifying the content that those students did not master. Trying to figure out, was it something lacking with tier one instruction? And we have identified a group of students that need interventions right away, so that we can get that needle moving back in the right direction. But we are working on it. We're gonna start interventions on the twenty-third of January, which is next week. Yeah, next week, and then we're gonna do a checkpoint to see in about two to three weeks where those students are with that content that they did not master.
Yeah, 'cause that's crazy. And it went up everything else at top of the university.
And it's significantly lower than this time last year. So we have been, it's, and it's other moving parts when it comes to our eleventh graders, they're full-time college students. So a lot of times, they do prioritize those college classes. Some of the teachers sometimes actually take up the laptops because if you're not walking around, as soon as you turn your back, they're pulling up their college candy. So we've been having some struggles there that we're trying to, trying to work through.
Hey, everyone. And the content area of Module One at Natchez High School, we set a proficiency goal, forty-five percent. At this time, we are at twenty-two percent, so we're roughly halfway where we want to be. And Module One, we have some systems in place, some things such as after-school tutoring. Intention is upcoming in March the twentieth. We also have, talk about consulting coming in, we've been talking with parents, data talks, et cetera, et cetera. And also improving our Module One proficiency to achieve our goal. Last year, we achieved forty-three percent proficiency. And the content area of Algebra One, both of these are ninth-grade test areas as well. We set a proficiency goal of twenty-five percent, based largely upon last year's math data, with students when they're in eighth grade, who also are taking the duration. Some of the students that are testing this year have been pretty much out of the record school environment. Since COVID, we're looking at a close to twenty percent of our student population of ninth graders. The ones that really say ninth, a tenth grade, shall I say, who are taking their ninth grade assessment for the first time during, due to the fact that they were in busman credit recovery for roughly the past two years. So now for one, we have a proficiency goal of twenty-five percent. Unfortunately, at this time, we are only sitting at five percent. But I also want to reiterate that we have some systems in place, such as after-school tutoring. On average, they, Dr. Conway, we have in one of twenty-eighteen and twenty-three students coming to after-school tutoring that takes place on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We have a strategic plan that's put in place in November. I went on surgery, so I think it's starting to take place in November. And basically, team teaching is going on between Dr. Conway and Mr. Watson, also a consultant, she's coming in. That was she working in the content area of Algebra Two. And I think she's gonna start working in content after Algebra One very soon. And we're hoping that different things that we have in place, after-school tutoring, intervention, data talks with the students, teachers who have already started this process, that the students know which particular standard that they have a proficiency in. And we're trying to put some things in place to rectify those standards, in hopes that we can get our meet-up proficiency goal in Algebra One. And also along with our growth goal in Algebra One, we have a growth goal, growth for all goals of eighty-five percent. And we have a growth, I'm sorry, growth for all goal of eighty-five percent. And we have a growth for our lowest-performing students of ninety-five percent. And so overall, high school, we earned six hundred and eleven points last year. It takes six forty-nine to be a B, and so we're actually thirty-eight points away.
I don't, I mean, you know, I don't want to put the pressure on y'all that more than they do, but you know that we're not, somehow the community doesn't believe it. And like, we need another year of these good scores, you know, because somehow they, they think it's some sort of blip, and we want to prove them wrong.
So hopefully we get, you know, we have eight points in the CCR ACT category, for example. And so we're, we're instituting boot camps, we're gonna be doing that in the month of February to address some of those deficits. And so if we can get at least thirty-eight from there, we'll be in good stead.
But if, based on where we are now, and if we stay at the same level.
We'll stay at a C.
We'll stay at a C?
Yes, sir.
Is there any way we would drop down from a C if we stayed at the same level?
No, and I think you went out in two areas. The numbers that we earned last year, we'll retain those for this year. That's why we track that data with every, every, every month, we're looking at those numbers. Because if there's an area that we are dropping in or not performing according to our plan, then we're, we're gonna implement an action plan. And not much, there's no pressure on.
And, and look, y'all, I, you know, I'm not somebody that wants us to live and die by numbers. I don't like that. But I, we're just aware that that is what, you know, what really counts to me is with individual children. And, and, you know, but y'all know that that's what the community sees and how our performance is, and it's been, it's hanging there.
It's unfortunate that the judges, the judgments that are made of made from limited cases in a narrow market, but, but that's what we did.
That's what we're dealing with.
That's what we do.
And, but it just, we appreciate your, all of your hard work. And, 'cause I know that a lot of that hard work is keeping up with this data, right? And, and watching this data, and that is tremendous work, and I'm aware of it. It's not exciting work, it's hard work, and I appreciate it.
You know, Doc, this, uh, nationally, they said it, you get some, there are some school districts or some states that are giving, that are, uh, stop measuring kids going to Carter's through the A C T and A S A P. You know that, don't you?
And they will move to portfolios and move away from all this data, but, you know, Miss Sydney's not there yet.
Yeah, I know.
We thank you all, and just keep pressing on that, uh, ten. 'Cause I know ten is something that, is there nine here, we can't teach?
Right.
So that's, just work on the ten, okay?
You know, um, we've been celebrating the legacy of Dr. Kim this week, and we'll continue on to celebrate. And you all part of the legacy, so keep the dream alive. 'Cause we see the bathtub, and we're gonna get there. So thank you, Dr. Gordon, thank y'all, I appreciate it. Y'all go then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Island Number Six approved December twenty, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting minutes, and approve of January the sixth, twenty twenty-three, special call meeting minutes. Can get approved?
So moved.
It's a move, it's something all in favor? Pass five zero. Okay.
Who said?
Everybody, just big boy.
Ms. Davis, we got some vote on this, on this, uh, February meeting that gotta be moved up, 'cause you know we're gonna be in, uh.
Hmm, it's already done.
Okay, so it'll be in Congress.
Next February.
Oh, a regular meeting?
No, February regular meeting is gonna move up, obviously, because.
It's already the Congress.
Congress, oh, yeah.
Coming to Jackson.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. All right, can you approve of content now?
If there's some objection, I move that we approve all of the content.
Thank you.
We move in seven all in favor? Five zero now.
Will we approve all that tonight? I'm just joking.
You know, eight point one, and now eight point two, so it'll be approval of accepted bids for building, the building circuits.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, back in November, we advertised for bids for our building to building connections. We got two bids in, we have two bids in, one from, uh, A T and T, and one from Union and Father. So I'm asking the board to accept those bids for the U. And can we come back on the next board meeting or executive assistant board meeting around Tuesday to, um, find out who won the old bid?
You mean, you, you're also looking for a motion for us to accept the bid, not to select?
Select, yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
Seven.
Been moved and seven all in favor? All right, pass the five zero, okay. Eight point two, which is now approve of claim documents, Mr. Davis.
Okay. Yes, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
All right.
Attorney, Deputy Assistant Attorney, Legal Counsel, you have for you, item. Trying to be tech, tech savvy. Okay, you have, um, it's eight point two. The approval of claim documents, some of the financial reports. So within this section, you would have the December claims documents, and also the December financial report. And additionally, there are the construction project summaries included there, too, for you. I will file to see if there are any questions.
You said eight point two, this is eight point three, right?
Eight, no, we moved eight.
Oh, okay.
It was eight. That's, that's all right, I don't have anybody having. No question? Can we get approval for the claim documents accepted at all?
And I, I, I'll, I'll promote that we approve all of items under eight point two.
Just been moved and seven all in favor? All right, pass the five zero, thank you, Mr. Davis. Eight point three, approve of grant writer?
Okay, eight point, uh, three, uh, to approve of grant writer. Basically, Ms. Campbell, she not only does she write the grant, now she always see the grants as well. And you'll have a, quite a bit of money float around through the district right now for, for grants. So we wanted to go ahead and approve, uh, approve for, you know, for the, uh, for the upcoming year. Not only for the writer, but for the president, who we have with her, to always see the grants, because, you know, there's a lot of information have to go in once you want those grants are actually awarded.
It's the same thing that you're doing, we're just doing it another year.
Right.
I move for approval for, uh, grant writer, he's already. So, I have a question.
Yeah, what question?
Okay.
Yeah, it's a seven?
Seven.
It's been moved and seven, any question? Any discussion?
So it's, it's the, um, the service plus the management? Yeah. That's the only question I had, I'm making sure.
The service is, is, is a retain a fee, right?
Yeah, what we pay.
Yeah.
And then she.
Then she writes in, uh.
A fee out of the.
Okay.
Right.
The grants.
So, so, I think some kind of paperwork or something, you throw in, she, she.
Right, she kept, keep that on.
Directing the grant is the really harder part.
She, she the project manager.
Right, so is not any additional fee coming in? That's what I'm asking.
From us?
From us?
No.
Okay.
No, it's coming as a part of the grant.
Yeah, she writes her stuff in.
Just making sure she, yeah, that was, yeah, okay, great.
Okay, so the discussion is done, can we get a vote?
All right.
No motion?
All in favor? Okay, pass the five zero. All right, administrative report, thirty-day review policies, Ms. Ms. Green? I don't know what she got in there. Go get it, yeah.
She has a couple of.
Thirty-day review, let me look at it.
Four for reviewing.
Whatever it is, it's on here, right?
Yeah.
Okay, it is, we don't have to vote on it. Okay, nine point two, Mr. Davis?
Good evening. President James, President Ford, Mr. Busher, Ms. McDonald Green. Before you, you have the quarterly safety report for October through December, uh, twenty twenty-two. Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis. Okay, nine point three, federal program?
She's not the date.
She's not here, but she just used to give us a update. Okay, board calendar, you know about the board calendar, with just anything that needs to be added, taken away, given, missed.
So have we already changed that date, you just spoke about?
Yes, say we been done that. So intended update.
Let's see, we tend to think, we receive a monthly report from our, uh, P T S A liaison. And, you know, for the first time, I know since I've been here probably for a long time, all of our P T As are functioning, you know, some are struggling a little bit, but at least, you know, we have enough people being every month. I think the attendance, uh, continues to, uh, pick up for our P T S A. And, uh, as a result, all of them have been, uh, certified by the Secretary of State. Oh, I know that's a first.
Yeah, it is.
We are moving in, in right.
Yeah, that's a first.
That's good, that's good.
Uh, also, in addition to P T S A, uh, we have a class of nineteen seventy-three. They want to take part in the, uh, graduation ceremony this coming year. I don't know how many it's gonna be, and it's something I need to also discuss with Mr. Jackson. Is their golden, their golden year, whatever?
Golden player.
Yeah. Is their golden anniversary?
No, I don't think we ought to do this, but I, but I would be, I don't, no, it's not my year. I wish it was my year.
But, uh, but they will, uh, buy all the denture, the garyia, and everything. Uh, they want to just to wear a gold cord signifying their peace to be out of, uh, out of school, and, and those kind of things. So I'll need to get with Mr. Jackson, because we have to work in our mind how we would set up a situation like that. And I'm quite sure, for the most part, you know, when they wanna do this, the number of problems very limited. It won't be the same number they left here with.
Why do we wanna mix up somebody else's graduation with, I don't understand that.
The colleges do that, honestly.
I know that the colleges do, in order to make money.
So, so.
Okay, did they, there's a money making thing?
They do it for scholarships.
Okay, let's, but so why not, we'll, we'll discuss later, but they want us to be that, right? So why not just have one of them, you know?
Well, do they just wanna stand up and speak in here?
Yeah, can we talk about that?
They don't want.
Well, let's, let's talk about this later.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, is it?
Oh, yes.
Okay, any school board members having, Dr. Rock? Dr. Rock, you got anything?
Oh, no.
No, sir.
No comment.
I wanna know who that mess man is, like that. I, I wanna acknowledge, uh, uh, Reverend Pastor Kevin White. Who, who was a former band member, man, back in the early eighties. With Comustion, he was out, he's singing. Thank you for attending our, our meeting.
Don't expose him, now you're exposing yourself.
That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Good to see you, Pastor.
There's a century.
Likewise. I don't have anything, so we can go into, uh.
Hello. Hello. You all. I'd offer most we have global determination.
Same.
Okay, it's been seven all in favor? We all, we have global determination?
I'd offer motion going to executive section.